Good evening, we will call this public hearing to order. Good evening and welcome to the public hearing on behalf of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. My name is Alexander Chavers. I am the designated hearing officer for these proceedings. The role of the hearing officer is limited to ensuring an orderly hearing so that an accurate record of this hearing may be developed for the department's evaluation. I do not make any decisions regarding the proposed permit action. On behalf of the department, we appreciate your participation in tonight's hearing regarding the proposed initial issuance of the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or MPDES, permit number AL-0084447 to Integra Water Madison County LLC for the discharge of treated domestic wastewater from the Integra Water Madison County East Water Reclamation Facility into Flint River, which is classified as fish and wildlife in the Tennessee River Basin. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to present oral testimony on the proposed permit action. In addition to oral testimony... In addition... Is that better? Sorry. This thing is sensitive. In addition to oral testimony, the department will also consider all written comments submitted before the close of the public comment period. The department has requested your comments and we appreciate you taking the time to make them known to us. On September 5th, 2025, notice of the date, time, place, and purpose of this hearing was posted on the department's website. In addition, the department sent notice of this hearing by email to individuals and organizations who had previously requested advanced notice of permit proceedings. A copy of the notice and the email distribution list will be entered into the record of these proceedings. Copies of the public notice, permit application, preliminary determination, and draft permit have been made available for inspection by the public at the offices of the department at 1400 Coliseum Boulevard in Montgomery, as well as on the department's website. This hearing is open to the public and anyone wishing to present oral testimony or submit a written statement may do so. Lengthy statements or those containing considerable technical or other complex data should be submitted in writing. Summaries of such statements may be presented orally. Each speaker will have five minutes to present their testimony. All testimony and written comments should be as factual as possible and should address the subject of this hearing. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the public to offer comments to help ensure that all relevant factors are considered before a final permit decision is made. Please be advised that the department is limited in the factors it can consider when making permit decisions and must base the determinations only on whether the permit applicant has satisfied those requirements of applicable environmental statutes and regulations granted to A.D.M. by the legislature. Persons giving testimony may be questioned by the hearing officer or other department staff to clarify points and to develop a better understanding of what is being presented. This proceeding tonight is not an open forum as in a question and answer session. This hearing is an opportunity for you to submit comments that you wish the department to consider in the final review of the permit application. However, you may pose a comment in the form of a question, which will be compiled and addressed by the department in its complete response to comments. In addition to oral testimony, written comments may be submitted on the proposed permit action. You do not have to make an oral statement tonight in order to have your written comments considered by the department. Written statements may be submitted to the hearing officer tonight or delivered to the department in Montgomery as directed in the public notice for this hearing. All written statements previously submitted and those received by the department before the end of the public comment period will be included in the hearing record. It is important to note that written comments submitted through postal or electronic mail are given the same consideration as those that are presented in person at this hearing. All oral and written testimony will be included in the hearing record. After giving full consideration to the hearing record, the department will make its final decision on the proposed permit action and develop a response to comments for the draft permit. The hearing record, final permit determination, and response to comments will be posted to the department's e-file system. This hearing is being captured by a court reporter to develop a transcript of this hearing for review by the department. In addition, the entire proceeding is being recorded on video to be posted on the department's YouTube channel to make it accessible to the public. Now let us move on to the purpose of this hearing, the receipt of public comments. The order of appearance of persons giving testimony will be as follows. First, a representative of the department's water division. Then, a representative of the company will provide a statement. Then, any elected officials or their representatives who have registered to speak this evening. All remaining members of the public will be heard in the order in which they registered this evening. I now recognize Mr. Dustin Stokes to present a statement on behalf of the department's water division.
Good evening, can everyone hear me? Alright. My name is Dustin Stokes and I am the chief of the municipal section within the industrial municipal branch of the water division of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. The municipal section regulates the permitting, compliance, and enforcement activities for the discharge of treated wastewater from publicly and privately owned municipal wastewater facilities within the state of Alabama. The department's water division is also represented this evening by Mrs. Stephanie Ammons, an environmental engineer in the municipal section, and Mr. Scott Ramsey, chief of the municipal industrial municipal branch. The department exercises authority under the Alabama Water Pollution Control Act and the Alabama Environmental Management Act to administer and to enforce Alabama's water pollution and water quality regulations. The department also has the authority to implement federal water pollution control regulations. This hearing concerns the draft National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or MPDES, permit initial issuance for the Integra Water Madison County East Walker Water Reclamation Facility located in New Market, Alabama. The draft MPDES permit, as public notice, would regulate the discharge of treated domestic wastewater to the Flint River from a wastewater treatment facility with a design capacity of 250,000 gallons per day from an outfall designated as Outfall 0011. The draft MPDES permit also includes a facility expansion to a total design capacity of 990,000 gallons per day from an outfall designated as 0012. The outfall location is the same for both the 250,000 gallon per day facility and the upgraded 990,000 gallon per day facility. The designated use classification of the Flint River is fish and wildlife. Fish and wildlife water bodies are best used for fishing, propagation of fish, aquatic life, and wildlife, and is recognized as these waters may be used for incidental water contact year-in and whole water contact recreation during the months of May through October. The terms and conditions of the permit have been developed by A.D.M. in accordance with applicable state and federal regulations, which are designed to be protective of human health and the environment. A.D.M. does not exercise zoning authority and may only consider comments related to water quality in its final permitting decision. Similarly, A.D.M. understands legitimate concerns may be held by the public, including truck traffic, property values, aesthetics, proximity to residences, and noise. A.D.M.'s authority regarding wastewater discharges is limited to the regulation of all discharges of affluent waters to the state. The department has made a preliminary determination that compliance by Integra Water Madison County LLC with the terms and conditions of the proposed draft MPDES permit will not result in violations of applicable state water quality standards designed to protect human health and the environment. This preliminary determination will be reconsidered after all comments are received and reviewed. Thank you.
I now recognize Mr. John McDonald to present a statement on behalf of Integra Water Madison County LLC.
Good evening, my name is John McDonald, I am CEO of Integra Water. I want to start by thanking the Alabama Department of Environmental Management and the New Market Madison County community for the opportunity to speak today. We recognize that whenever new facilities are proposed near neighborhoods and rivers, questions naturally arise and we take those concerns seriously. We all care about the Flint River and the health and safety of our community. The proposed wastewater facility over Winchester Road is designated as a priority.
Move up.
Face people.
Move up a little closer to the mic.
How much space is that there? The statue was funny.
Everybody will have an opportunity to present comments. Please show respect to the speakers.
To speak to you guys.
Speak to me, you're speaking to me.
The proposed wastewater treatment facility over Winchester Road is designated as a priority. It's a need to support both existing homes and future growth in Madison County, one of the fastest growing counties in the state. The site was selected carefully based on long-term system planning, suitability, and environmental considerations. First, I want to be clear, this is highly treated disinfectant water, not all sewage. Every process at this facility meets or exceeds federal and Alabama state standards. It will include tertiary disc filtration to reduce the total suspended solids and a high-power U.D. light to destroy microorganisms without pouring, ensuring a safe environmentally sensible discharge. We are also designing the facility to minimize community impact. Quider modern delivery technology will replace older systems, significantly reducing noise. Other control measures including hydrogen sulfide inhibitors, the elimination of drying beds will further reduce potential noises. The facility is engineered to operate safely during power outages or severe weather thanks to a standby generator with an automatic transfer switch. Environmental stewardship is at the heart of our approach. All discharges are carefully modeled to protect aquatic life and comply with river classifications. Any work near protected species fully complies with the Endangered Species Act. Our goal is to ensure the Flint River remains safe and healthy for swimming, fishing, kayaking, and wildlife. Security and property protection are also a priority. Any trespassing or general activity will be actively monitored in local authorities if involved. Neighbors have offered support to ensure the site remains secure and we welcome residents to visit our modest accounting facility to see the water blowers and learn more about our processes firsthand. Integra Water is committed to being a good neighbor and a trusted steward of our waterways. We understand that this facility is more than just infrastructure, it's part of their community. That's why we're dedicated, listening carefully, sharing facts openly, and operating responsibly every step of the way. We will continue to provide updates, answers, questions, and learn alongside residents to ensure the Flint River remains safe and healthy for everyone. Our goal is simple, to meet the growing needs of the in-service Madison County community with a facility that's safe, environmentally responsible, and virtually invisible in some impact while protecting the natural resources we all care about. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and for allowing us to demonstrate that Integra Water is delivering solutions for safe, sustainable, and community fairness.
I have no cards indicating that any elected officials are registered to speak at this time. We will now proceed to the receipt of comments from members of the public. If anyone has prepared a statement that cannot be presented in a five-minute timeframe, please use your time for oral testimony to summarize your comments and submit your full statement to the department in writing for placement in the record. I now recognize John L. Smith to speak. Please step up to the microphone. No, face me. Yeah, face the hearing officer. Please step up to the microphone, clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
My name is John L. Smith, and that's my real name. I'm representing myself, basically. I've lived in Berry Hill since 1998 on River Water Trail. And last year I started using the Flint River for canoeing, fishing, and so forth. The Flint River at times is very low. In fact, it's sometimes it's not quite above ankle deep. So I want the folks to keep that in mind and remember while I just regress them in it. In 2021, I received a letter in the mail from the county engineers announcing the development that is going to be built right across the creek for me, which is a Bergdiner branch. And the engineers, I went to the meeting on April 14th. The engineers made a nice presentation of 54 lots. They showed the access to Winchester Road, the stormwater runoff, proximity to the Flint River, and they did a good job. It was a nice presentation and the residents who attended, we all left there feeling pretty good. There was nothing negative about that. Well, the developer went under, so we heard, and that land stayed vacant until just recently when A.D.M. came along with a request for a reissue of a permit for Integra to build a sewage treatment plant in that same parcel of land that I just explained this is going to be a subdivision. Well, when the residents found out about that, we had one day left on a supposed 30-day public comment period. We found out only one day in advance. Well, people started to call A.D.M. and the representative there explained, "Well, it was on our website." Now, I don't think there's anybody in this room that would wake up every morning and think, "Gee, I wonder if someone's going to build a sewage treatment plant or a nuclear power plant next to my house." That was not a very good, not a very good response. And it just upset a lot of people. I'll compare that response to what we received for a subdivision that was basically harmless. It's going to do no dignity for our subdivision, but we got a presentation from engineers with a full, large-scale plat, the whole nine yards, and then we get, "Well, it's on our website," from A.D.M. So that didn't go over well, obviously. I just want to make one more point. Sometime over the years, somebody decided to redefine the word sewage and called it wastewater. Well, to me wastewater is what come out of your bathtub or out of your sink maybe. On the other hand, sewage is what goes in and out of the toilet, which could also include leftover household chemicals, old prescription drugs. Who knows what people flush down the toilet? But no matter what you want to call it, wastewater, treated water, sewage treatment water, it's still stinks and so is the process that A.D.M. uses to require a permit. Thank you.
I now recognize Anne Humphrey. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
My name is Anne Humphrey, and I represent myself. I want to say something personal. What we're talking about here, what is how it affects me is this is my home. I live here. We actually paid extra money for a waterfront Flint River lot. My family bought the first lot in Berry Hill 28 years ago. We designed our home and built it, and we worked hard for years to pay our mortgage. Now we're retired and we plan to sit on our porch and enjoy the Flint River. We never expected an industrial plant next door. I don't want to live in an industrial area. I don't want my home devalued, and I don't want to move. Thank you for considering not issuing this permit. Thank you.
I now, I now recognize Misty LaFeverz. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
Hi, I'm Misty LaFeverz, and I am representing myself and hopefully representing the children who live along this river. I want to start by saying that I'm not a biologist or an ecologist. All of my education and all of my years of work have been devoted to working with children and making this world better for them. That being said, I want to do everything that I can to keep this area healthy and this river clean so that the children in our community can enjoy this river for generations to come. I currently teach at Burton Elementary, which also sits on the Flint River. Our school just completed an outdoor classroom and an observatory to allow students to learn about surrounded by nature. We want to take them outside. We want to watch pier the frogs, we want to watch the herons. We want to study the same water that lines through all of their neighborhoods. For many of my students, this is their first real connection to the natural world. And for many of them, outdoor classrooms are where science comes alive. But if Integra's water plan moves forward, this learning space and the entire natural environment around it will be impacted. Releasing up to 1 million gallons of treated wastewater per day will change everything about that landscape. It will affect the smell, the water quality, and the very air that our students breathe during outdoor lessons. Can you imagine trying to inspire children to love science, nature, and conservation when the water around them smells like sewage? Even on Integra's own website, it clearly states that humans should not swim or have full-body contact with reclaimed or treated wastewater, yet that's exactly what they plan to release into the Flint River. The same water where our children fish, kayak, and float every summer. If this discharge is allowed, it will essentially close the river for recreation. Families would no longer be able to safely swim, kayak, float, or fish these waters. What has always been our living river will quickly become a restricted zone that families and children are warned to avoid. We don't just live near the Flint River, we live with it. My kids and the kids in our neighborhood don't sit inside on video games all day. They are outside. They fish these waters in the shallows. They chase minnows with nets. They float down that river on warm days. And the Flint isn't just water to us, it's part of our family's life and it's part of this community. That's why this proposal by Integra is so close to home. Integra wants to dump treated sewage into the same river that our children fish and swim in, and this isn't a city service. It's a private company working with big developers to try to make a profit off of our environment. What's worse, they already have record EPA and A.D.M. violations at the marina facility over the ECO, overages of ECO line, nitrogen, and ammonia. They were fined $100,000 just a few years ago for polluting public drinking water. If they can't protect the people there, why should we trust them to protect our river here? We cannot risk turning our river into another dumping ground. We owe it to our kids. We owe it to the next generation to just say no. So tonight I am asking A.D.M. to deny Integra's permit and save the river that is so important to our community. Thousands of people kayak, fish, and swim here every year, and this river deserves protection, not pollution. So let's keep our playgrounds clean, let's keep our community thriving, and let's keep sewage out of our Flint River. Thank you.
I now recognize Ben Stafford. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
My name is Ben Stafford, and I represent myself. Members of Alabama Department of Environmental Management, my home is approximately 800 feet from the site of the proposed wastewater treatment facility. I am here today as a concerned citizen who believes that the Flint River and the people who depend on it deserve full protection under Alabama law. The Flint River is a place of recreation, family gatherings, and community life. It is also a source of income for local businesses that provide fishing, kayak, and tourism services. The health of this river is directly tied to the health of our community. Any risk of pollution threatens not only the water itself, but also the families and businesses that rely on it. The Alabama Environmental Management Act, found in Alabama Code 2222 Alpha Tag 1 through 2222 Alpha Tag 16, gives A.D.M. the responsibility to protect public health and the environment. The National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System requires that no discharge into Alabama waters may cause a violation of water quality standards. A.D.M. Administrative Code Rule 33566.04 makes clear that the permits must not allow discharges that cause or contribute to violations of those standards. With this facility so close to homes and to the Flint River, that assurances cannot be made. The Alabama Water Pollution Control Act, Alabama Code 2222 Tag 1, affirms the right of citizens to clean water and requires the state to prevent pollution that would impair recreation, wildlife, and public enjoyment. This project places those rights at risk. I respectfully ask A.D.M. to deny this permit or at the very least to require a full environmental impact study and a public health risk analysis before moving forward. The advocate must prove that this facility will not harm our water, or our health, or our way of life. We are not opposed to progress, we are opposed to pollution. I ask that you stand with us in protecting the Flint River, our homes, and the future of our community. I ask that you do the right thing. Thank you.
I now recognize Melissa Stafford. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
I am Melissa Stafford, and I am representing my family and my community that I am so proud of the turnout tonight. My statement is very personal, so forgive me if I get a little shaky. I bought the house site in the scene four years ago. I bought it because of its proximity to the Flint River because I have two sons that love to fish and kayak. When our neighborhood learned about this sewage plant, we rallied, you can see behind you. Our community is full of amazing and intelligent individuals who know and understand the value of community and the value of what the Flint River means to us. Now let me tell you who has not been a good neighbor, Integra Water of Madison County. On July 25th at 10:00 a.m., my family pumped up our river flits and walked down from our house to the Berry Hill Community Park. It's filled with swings, and it's where our kayaks launch. Before we got our rafts in the water, gunshots started whizzing above our heads. The first bullets hit the trees above my 16-year-old nephew's head. We immediately hit the ground and screamed in the direction of that property. "Stop shooting, we're down here, stop shooting." I stayed on the phone with 911 for the entire time. And after 10 to 12 terrifying minutes of straight gunshots from multiple guns, three Madison County Sheriff deputies arrived. The deputies drove to the gate across Integra's property. They spoke to three men, and the men had a gun, they all had guns, and they had a key to the gate. They told the deputies that they had the permission of the property owner to shoot guns on the property. This incident is documented with the sheriff's report. This incident is documented with the sheriff's report that I will provide a hard copy for you. I'd like to tell you that this incident was isolated, but it wasn't. I've also got all the screenshots from our neighborhood Facebook group where all of our neighbors were saying, "Hey guys, did you hear all these gunshots? Where are these gunshots coming from?" All summer long. Thank God, no one was killed because of the negligence of this landowner. In addition to the landowners seemingly allowing shootings in our neighborhood, the Meridianville Plant, pictures are over here, is polluting Briar Fork. It's operating over its permit level with E. coli and disgusting solids are collecting in the water. Under your watch! On page 78 of this permit, there is a section that lists other permits to consider when you're making the decision about this one. I am asking that you consider the dumping and the violations of the Meridianville Plant permit when you consider granting another permit to this same company. To our beloved Flint River, consider the whole body contact that is a part of your standards, your mandate within fish and wildlife has standards that say whole body content is allowed. That's what we're doing. That's what we're doing in our neighborhoods. We have kayak launch, we swim, we fish. Consider this use, consider our kayak businesses, consider the wildlife such as the endangered hellbender salamander. Do not issue this permit, do the right thing.
I now recognize Rowan Stafford.
He's still at football practice, can he come back?
There's an opportunity at the end for people who didn't get to speak, I'll set it to the side.
Thank you.
I now recognize... We will backtrack. I now recognize Rowan Stafford. Please step up to the microphone, clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent. And since you weren't here, I will just say, we've got five minutes.
Alright, my name is Rowan Stafford and I'm in the interest of the Flint River. And I just want to say, it's a great place to fish, shouldn't put a food plant in. All my friends, we go down there every day in the summer, swimming, playing, having a good time. And if like, that were to be ruined or tarnished by this food plant, that would really mess things up. It's going to deplete home values, which is going to mess a lot of people's financials up. Overall, it's just nothing good in this board.
I now recognize Alicia Booth Hagermaker.
I actually have a proposal for you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's two there, okay.
Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
My name is Alicia Booth Hagermaker and I am here representing myself. Good evening, and I just want to let you know that I live across the street from me. There's some property that is not occupied and beyond that is the Flint River, so I live basically on the Flint River. I wanted to begin by saying that none of us are against progress. We all understand that more people moving here means water use and more wastewater to manage. The question isn't if we expand capacity, it's how we do it responsibly. AID's current proposal for single-line containment tanks in a known flood zone right beside one of our most valuable resources. That design might check the regulatory boxes, but it does not meet the standard of true public responsibility. One water, one failure in contamination could reach the same river that supplies recreation, irrigation, and groundwater recharge for this community. There are better options that meet the same need without gambling with our water. Other regions use biofiltration and constructed wetland systems, living infrastructure that filters wastewater naturally through soil and native plants before it ever reaches the river. These systems are proven, lower cost over time, and scalable as populations grow. They turn wastewater into clean groundwater instead of storing it in tanks that can leak. I'm not asking AID to stop growth, I'm asking AID to do growth wisely, to hold contractors to higher design standards, to require double or triple line containment if tanks remain, and to reevaluate modern nature-based treatment systems that protect both people and the environment. This is about civic responsibility. We teach our kids not to leave a mess for someone else to clean up. Government should live by the same rule. Our choices... Our choices today decide whether this community thrives or spends decades paying to fix preventable contamination. So I'm asking AID and our local leaders, please take the extra step, review safer alternatives, engage residents in the design process, let's make this project something we can all be proud of, one that serves growth and protects the Flint River that gives this community life. Thank you.
I now recognize Rosemary McCraney. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
Rosemary McCraney, and I'm speaking out from McCraney Farms, LLC. Our family farm has been in our family for over 200 years. And nature has always been my happy place. I feel a biblical connection to nature. I used to, when I was a lot younger, I wandered around, I explored, I looked for rocks and wildflowers, I found resurrection fern, I found a ball down on the creek that had, I guess the rain had unwashed. I brought it home and discovered it was a green dragon. Now that sounds ridiculous, but it's akin to a jack-in-the-口袋. And we want to protect our little piece of Eden. And I'm just begging you, don't do this to us. We don't deserve it.
I now recognize Thomas Michael Danforth. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
Thomas Michael Danforth, representing myself. All these folks. Not a hint of them to say. But after hearing all of this, and all the passion, I don't know what I can add to it. Maybe a couple things. Missing in this whole process seems to be the accountability in rules, regulations, and policies of AID that attempts for common sense. Ahead of course. And it started out by saying justification for alternative. Not known, but surely meant the word was substituted. That makes sense to who? The classification of this river does nothing to reflect the use of this river. This section of this river is used by people for fun, recreation, for kayaking and canoeing, for fishing, for swimming. The fact that it's misclassified, I don't know how you throw away an important part of what these people gather it all. Because of a misclassification. I can't add anything else. Thank you.
I now recognize Eddie M. Passor. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization you represent.
My name is Eddie B. Passor, I represent myself. I live on Valhalla Road, on the Flint River. This thing doesn't need to happen, because it's not only affecting these people in their neighborhood, it's affecting everyone downstream. All the way up from where it starts in Flint, Tennessee, all the way down to the Tennessee River. None of this needs to be in this river. I've been around sewage treatment plants. My father worked in sewage industry. This place that they're building with the discharge doesn't need to happen. You need to rethink this, do it through some, do it some other way, do not do it through a discharge. We have too many people that use this river and pay a lot of money to a lot of businesses, and we have a lot of people that come in and support this community because of this river. This don't need to happen, don't need to happen at all. Please, I'm begging you, don't let this, don't let that happen in my backyard.
I now recognize Jenny Sumato. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
My name is Jenny Sumato and I represent myself and the other residents of Berry Hill. To understand the potential threats this plant poses to our community, I read over the documents that were shared with us, and to the best of my ability, because they're rather technical, but upon review, I feel it's important to highlight the following points. So the draft permit that was submitted for us to look over looked like it had a tiered output plan that you referenced earlier, starting at the .25 million gallons daily and increasing to the .99 million gallons daily. Now, as I went through the 110-page document, there was down in the 40s, two letters that were dated from October 2022 that I believe are referencing the plant that we're disputing today. And it mentions in both of them that it's a tiered output going from .99 million gallons a day to 4 million gallons daily. And I'm interested to know if that's still the proposed final amount that would be four times what we're discussing today based off the two letters. This one does say that the proposed outfall is located at the Flint River south of Alder Branch and included coordinates that were pretty close to what we're discussing today. And the other one talks about the tiered system and asks to please move forward with the 4 million gallons daily waste load allocation. And I guess I'm just concerned as what's being sold is like a smaller plant today has the potential to be a much larger plant in the future. I also, while reading this document, thought it was interesting to point out the difference between a minor and a major classification with these plants. At a million gallons and over, those plants are subject to much more strict and frequent toxicity testing, but now this plant will be currently at a level below that, meaning that at .99, which if you do the math, is about seven gallons per minute difference, it has less testing available to us to be able to review the toxicity levels. I find that distressing. Also, while reading the documents, it looked like the Flint River is already on Alabama's 303D list for turbidity, which for those of you who don't know what that means, that's the murkiness of the water. And to be on the 303D list, it means that this river has been identified as being impaired and not meeting certain standards as is, and that's without the allocated things that are, might be dumped into the river. So with that being said, the path, so that, so that, let me go back. Because it's on the 303D list, there's a lower level of pollutants that can be added at this point, meaning we have a pollution budget. So why does that matter right now? Well, the violations on a detailed facility report at Integra's McCullough Plant across town has noncompliant violations in six out of the last 12 quarters. The most recent violation being last quarter in April and June of this year. So that includes issues with E. coli, ammonia nitrogen, and TSS, which is total suspended solids. That's not solids like we're thinking, that solids, listen to like, the murkiness of the water. So those same pollutants, they have violations in, and they threaten our river at this point because it's on that 303D list. So why does this add to a risk? This looks like it's built to scale up, but staying in the minor category so we don't have toxicity testing. It targets an impaired river backed by a company with spotty compliance records with the very pollutants that will harm our fish, wildlife, and public use. In closing, please consider me the ghost of Christmas future. And that's not a threat, that's foreshadowing. If any of the possible negative effects listed materialize, look around, this is a unified community. How many people went to work today and then came here to defend your neighborhood? This is a unified community that will respond accordingly if any of these materialize in our river. Thank you.
I now recognize Laura M. Hopel. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
My name is Laura Hopel and I'm a resident of the Berry Hill Neighborhood and I am representing myself. The Flint River is classified as fish and wildlife water. As you can see by the opposition to this permit, the Flint is used by many humans as well. The legal Adam Chapter Code 335-6-10 acknowledges recreation and whole body contact used in waters classified as fish and wildlife. This community puts our whole body in the Flint. Kayak here, we fish here, we swim here, and we live here. AID's anti-degradiation policy states, "The purpose and intent of water quality standards is to conserve, protect, maintain, and improve public water supplies." So I find it odd that on page 2 of this permit and a letter from AID to the permittee, the following quote, "Alabama Department of Environmental Management encourages you to voluntarily consider pollution prevention pack practices." The letter goes on to say that if done, this would reduce or eliminate monetary requirements. Did you also ask for voluntary consideration for pollution prevention practices at the Meridianville Plant? Under your watch, the Briar Fork is currently being polluted by a facility operating over the permitted limits, and the result is polluted water, not safe for whole body contact. This literally stinks. This is neither a sign of food stewardship or a human good neighbor. You proved yourself a bad steward on the Briar Fork, I don't trust you to be a good one on the Flint. one on the Flint. I respectfully request that AID not issue any new permits on the Flint. If this permit is allowed to go through, this community will not move away. We will remain organized and committed to the health and ecology of the Flint River and its human, fish, and wildlife residents because we kayak here, we fish here, we swim here, and we live here. Do not approve this permit, please do the right thing.
I now recognize Dennis Worth. Please step up to the microphone, clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
My name is Dennis Worth, I live in Berry Hill, Texas with my wife Katie, and also my son Paul Worth, who lives in the city.